But I will, tonight I will call the meeting to order. This is the organizational meeting for the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners. And tonight, a few items down on the agenda. They will elect the Chair for the upcoming year. And once that is done, I will pass along the chairmanship duties of the meeting on to that selected individual. So, to open it, I'd like for everybody to please stand. And we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. It must be seen. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And I will point out that we have a couple of amendments. The first one, under Section D, General Business for Action, I, which is the Deputy Clerk Appointment, we will be moving that up to Section A, directly under the appointment of the Clerk to the Board. We will replace Section D, I, with, for action, with consideration for HVAC, application submittal to the TDA for funding. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
That's all that I know of. Anybody else, I'd make that motion.
We have a motion, or a second, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, thank you. Next item is the motion on the minutes that you will find on pages three through 10.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
A motion and a second on the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Next item was public comments. So if there is anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address the Board, please do so at this time. In seeing nor hearing none, I will close the public comment section. Next item is the election of the Board Chair. And before I do that, I would like to point out that Commissioner Greg Walker is not able to attend tonight. He had a trip associated with his line of work, so we certainly miss him. But at this point on the agenda, under Section A, we are now seeking nominations for the Board Chairman for the upcoming year. So at this point, I will entertain any nominations for the Chair.
I'll nominate Bobby Irwin to be the Chair again.
We have a nomination of Bobby Irwin. There are second to that.
Second.
We have a second for Bobby Irwin. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Bobby Irwin being the Chair for the upcoming year, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign. Congratulations, Chairman Irwin. The gavel is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Board members. Come on now.
It's yours.
Next on the agenda is the election of the Vice Chair. I will open that up for nominations.
I nominate Michelle Ginn as Vice Chair.
All second. Any other nominations on the floor?
I nominate Timmy Evans.
We'll vote on the first nomination.
All second, Timmy Evans.
Now have a second. So yes, you take them in order.
Yes. The first nomination was for Michelle Luthman, and there was a second. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Motion carries three to one.
And you. Your appointment of the Clerk.
On a board. Do we have to vote on the second nomination? No. Now we go to appoint the Clerk to the Board. And with the amended part to that.
You'll take the nomination for the Clerk first, which would be Danielle Atkins.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, John, and a second. Michelle? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four oh.
And your next item would be the appointment of a Deputy Clerk, which I would recommend is April Ham.
We have a motion for the Deputy Clerk and a recommendation of April Ham. We need a motion and a second.
Second.
Moved.
Second.
A motion, Timmy and John. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed likewise? Four oh. Appoint, I don't know. County Attorney. We have our current Attorney, been with us several, several years now. Can't count that many, but we thank you for everything you've done. So at this point, we need to appoint the County Attorney.
I nominate Heather Klein.
Second.
On with the nomination. Michelle with the second for Heather Klein. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four oh. Review and revised Board appointments. Those are pages in your packet, 11 through, on page 11 through 13.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one comment? I was, I was asked to make this comment, so I'm making it. Commissioner Greg Walker is not in attendance tonight. He asked that he not be appointed to any committee that he is not here to volunteer for. I'm only making that because he asked me to make that comment. Thank you.
Let's see. A question I think would be to Heather, and I guess to Michael. Does a Commissioner have to serve on a board that he's already been appointed to previously?
Does he have to? I don't know of anything that requires you have to.
Oh, he's not, he's not putting his name in the hat for any committee, is the way I understand it.
That he, that he is not here to volunteer for.
He's already volunteered for the committees he's on now, correct? That's the way I take it.
That's why I asked the question.
Is what it is. I'm only stating the obvious.
Well, I think he means that.
I agree.
That he's, don't put him on another board that he's not here to volunteer on. But the others, he's good with.
The pleasure of the Board.
Yeah.
So, let me understand this. So Mr. Walker will remain on the Boards that he's previously served on at this time?
You as the governing body can appoint him to anything. If he wishes to be taken off, he can certainly identify that at your next meeting he attends. Then you can reconsider. I answer the question as gray as I'm asked the question, Mr. Chairman.
We can oblige him, or we can put him on anything you want to, basically, but.
I would make a recommendation that we reassign him to all the Boards that he is currently assigned.
Agree.
You're making that a motion.
If you so desire.
Second.
Don't think, does it have to be a motion?
It doesn't have to be a vote.
No.
It's an appointment.
It's appointments.
These are appointments. So as you go down your list, you're going to notice that some of the, some of the appointments are not as they currently are. So I would recommend that you go through each one as you do each year, and you take those and make those appointments as you see fit.
Thank you.
And I do have one for the Board.
There it is.
Okay. The committees are on the Board, and everybody has that in their packet. The first one's the Allegheny County Agriculture Advisory Board. I serve on that. I would like to stay on that one.
No objection.
Next is Allegheny Public Library Board, and that is Commissioner Greg Walker. And at this point, we'll leave him on that Board. Next, Allegheny Group Homes Board, and that's Commissioner John Irwin.
Would like to continue.
Okay, any, that's fine with everybody. If, if some of these are not fine, somebody speak up. Appalachian District Health Board, that's me. I'd like to stay on that Board. Orange R and C D Board, Michelle, you're on that Board.
That's fine.
Thank you. We're going too fast, or? Okay.
You have to change.
Council on Aging, I'm on that Board. I'd like to stay. Thank you. Court Security and Renovation Committee is Timmy Evans and myself. I would like to stay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Timmy Wood also. Extension Advisory Leadership Council, I'm on that Board, but if anybody would like to be on it, it would not bother me to come off, but I'd be happy to stay. I'll stay. Our Grounds Board, that's Michelle Luthman and myself. I would like to stay.
I mean, I'm fine with staying too, unless, you know, Timmy expressed the desire to be on it too, so.
It's up to you two.
I'm good with you standing on it. And still the same, next year all goes well.
Okay, thank you. That stays the same.
I just want to give you a chance.
Yeah.
Fire Commission, now that's really.
That's me.
Michelle's on it.
Yeah.
That's what I indicated earlier. Some of these hadn't been changed.
I'd like to stay.
And you'd like to stay. Michelle would like to stay if that seats everybody. Next page, 12, is High Country Council on Government. Commissioner Timmy Evans is on that Board.
Yeah, I'll stay.
Okay, thank you. High Country RPO Advisory Committee, Timmy.
That's actually John.
That is mine, and I would like to continue.
Okay, that one's yours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. High Country Workforce Development Board, again Greg Walker's on that Board, so.
Greg was taken off that Board, and I assumed that position, and I'll keep it.
John's on that Board now. Then we'll get an updated copy of this to put in our files.
At your next meeting.
Yep. Home and Community Care Grant, tell you the truth, that's me, but I've, I've not had a meeting with these people. I don't know how often they meet. I haven't had any communication with them. So for right now, I'll stay on it, and let's do some research, and April will help me figure that one out. Next is Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and I assume Greg Walker's still on that one.
Yes.
Allegheny Chamber of Economic Development, Michelle Luthman, she would like to stay. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Michelle's on it. She would like to stay. I am Regional Advisory Board, Michelle's also on that. She would like to stay.
Yes, and I'd like for you to take Lisa Osborne off because she's retired now, and we need to put Stacy. Okay.
You got that, April? Next, Northwest Regional Library, Greg Walker's on it for right now. Partnership for Children, Timmy Evans.
Yes, I'm good on that.
Would like to stay. Social Service, Commissioner Michelle Luthman.
Yeah, I'd like to stay.
Thank you. Next page, 13, Virginia Carolina Water Authority, that is Michael Carter and Commissioner John Irwin.
Michael Carter by charter, by bylaws is assigned. The county managers are already assigned, and I will stay unless someone else wants it.
I think you got it. Veterans Advisory Committee, that is me. I'd like to stay. Joint Committee with the School Board is Timmy Evans and myself. I would like to stay.
I'm good.
And so would Timmy. A Board of Equalization and Review, that's all Commissioners are, have the opportunity to serve on that Board. Next is High Country RPO Rural Transportation.
I am currently in that position and would like to continue.
You and John.
No, just John.
Just John.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question about your Board of Equalization? It also has Rita Miller there. It has Rita Miller and Board of County Commissioners.
She stays on there. I mean, that's her job, right?
Yeah.
But you appoint her to it.
Okay. So we appoint Rita Miller to serve on that Board with the rest of us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So she can't tell me tomorrow that she's not appointed. I wanted to make sure that that was took care of.
She can't get out of any work.
Just want to make sure.
Nominating Committee is Timmy Evans and Michelle Luthman.
I'm good.
Thank you. Insurance Committee is Bobby Irwin and Michelle. I'd like to stay.
I'd like to stay.
Recreation Committee is Michelle Luthman and Bobby Irwin. I'd like to stay.
I would too.
Ordinance Committee, Michelle Luthman, and there again Greg Walker for now. I'm sure Michelle wants to stay. Configuration Change Control Board, Commissioner Bobby Irwin. I'd like to stay. Now, we have this Budget Committee listed on here, and Timmy and I served on it last year. I would like to serve on it again this year, along with Timmy Evans. I know in the past that we've waited till December, I mean January or something, but it's on the list now, so I would recommend that we stay that way.
I'm good.
Your last appointment.
Timmy, that's okay with you?
Yeah, I'm good.
And have I missed any? Like you said, we'll have an update at our next, next Board mid-month meeting. Thank you for that. View of Procedures, page, page 14 through 23. Is that Mr. Carter, or?
That's, that is your Rules of Procedures, that Board operates under. That is pages 14 through 23. And if you remember, if you have looked through it, you'll see some highlighted sections that we addressed earlier in the year. But as I recall, we, we did have conversation about any type of disciplinary process for the Board of Commissioners, which never got out of the blocks, I guess is the way I would put it. So this Rules of Procedure that you have before you does not include any such language.
I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that we add that disciplinary procedures will be in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, Chapter 62.
I think this, we probably need to have a work session on our procedures. I think there are several questions that have come up this year, especially about people not attending ethics trainings. You know, the state requires it, but there's no punishment. One of those laws the state put out there without any ramifications. I think that, possibly with what John's talking about, might be something for a work session January or February. What's the Board's thoughts?
Can we approve the Rules of Procedure that we have here at this time, and then?
As amended, you can do an amendment.
Amend it later. I think that's what we need to do, because there's probably some more conversation that we need to have on that.
I'm in agreement with that, Michelle, John.
So, motion to approve the Rules of Procedure as is?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Motion carries three to one. Okay, presentation, anything else on, on Section A?
Yes, sir.
To Section B, Presentation to the Board Comprehensive Transportation Plan. There's a bunch of them back there. David Graham, Ruben Crumey, come forward. Y'all don't have to sit on the back row. This whole microphone up to in, our IT person is asked to speak pretty close to the microphone.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, as long as everyone, red lights on, we're in good shape.
Sounds good. All right. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is David Graham. I'm with the High Country Council Governments Rural Planning Organization, and I have with me some folks from NC DOT who are partners with me in developing comprehensive transportation plans for the region. And specifically, Ruben Crumey, and it looks like James Upchurch is moving up a little ways. And we also have Gerald Carter in the far back. And I brought with me Chris Grubb. He is the new Planning Director at the High Country Council Governments, and today is his first day. So, it's his first trip? Yeah, today's his first day. So we brought him.
I apologize.
So I'm going to give a presentation today, and I'm going to stop halfway since I'm partners with NC DOT's Transportation Planning Division, and Ruben Crumey will finish up the second half, if that's okay. Now, I sent the presentation. Do you all have that queued up? If not, I've got some handouts here that I can share with you all instead. Either way, that's fine. And I've got a flash drive too, if that would work.
Flash drive might work, if you have that. We'll do the table if you want to. It's just right across it though. Only way it would is if we turned the volume up on the TVs, probably.
We'll give a shot, it's gonna.
Need a pointer?
A pointer. It's a pointer. She's a clicker, that's a pointer. So, just put my eye out.
Y'all ready? Here we go. So Allegheny County is next on our list to do what's called a Comprehensive Transportation Plan for the High Country Region. And so you're probably asking yourself, well, what is the Comprehensive Transportation Plan? And it's, we use CTP for short. So there's lots of acronyms in the world of transportation, and this is one of them. So go ahead to the next slide, please. So what is a CTP? It is a Long Range Needs-Based Plan with a 20, excuse me, 25 to 30-year planning period. It represents consensus on a future transportation system for the county. It's multimodal, meaning that we analyze, so can pedestrian network, as well as a public transportation network, and if you have rail, we analyze that as well. In addition, and most importantly, it satisfies North Carolina State Statute 136-66.2, which spells out the requirements for transportation planning, so you can get your projects funded in the state of North Carolina. Next slide, please. So it's developed cooperatively with NC DOT. As you can see, there's some of those folks in the room. The municipalities, in this case, would be the Town of Sparta, the County of Allegheny, as well as the Metropolitan or Rural Planning Organizations, and that would be me. I'm the High Country RPO, or Rural Planning Organization, as well as community stakeholders. And that is typically a steering committee that helps guide the planning process that we go through. And then, of course, the public is going to be involved as well as the planning process starts proceeding. We're going to be asking for their input on various potential recommendations throughout the, the study. Next slide. It's adopted or endorsed at three levels, so once the plan is completed. So once the, uh, plan is completed, I will be right back here. Uh, indoor, excuse me, approve the plan. I'll also be at the town of Sparta, asking them to do the same. Uh, the High Country Rural Planning Organization will endorse it and then it will move on to the, uh, NC DOT Board of Transportation for their approval so that they know everybody's on board, these are the projects that the county and the town are interested in, let's start moving forward. And so it's the first step in the development of projects for your county. And so, next slide. Uh, it identifies, um, solutions, whether you have, um, congestion issues or safety issues on, on your network. Um, it's, supports a community adopted vision. So on this, at, one of the first things that we'll do is have the steering committee come up with what's called a vision for the comprehensive transportation plan. You know, what, what do we want it to look like? And then it allows, um, communities to consider all modes of transportation. So we're not just talking highway, we're talking bicycle pedestrian network, we're talking, uh, public transportation and any other modes that a community has. And this right here, thank you for giving me this pointer, it's actually coming in pretty handy. Uh, this statement right here is, is, is a good one and thanks for putting that in there, Ruben. Uh, the result of the CTP process feeds into the NC DOT prioritization process and help guide MPOs and RPOs in developing project prioritization. Basically, what that is saying is the development of a comprehensive transportation plan positions you well for getting your projects funded in the state transportation improvement program. So that's, that's really, this is the first step in a long process, but it's an important step. Um, so, next slide, it might be Ruben's turn, no, I think I got one more here. Uh, so, um, the, the CTP facilitates accountability, uh, through, um, formal public involvement process. Uh, we consider the environmental, uh, resources in the, uh, study area and, um, provide information, uh, for projects, specific information. So when a recommendation does come out in the CTP, they're going to be project, give you all the critical data associated with that project so you know, you know, what the purpose is and whether or not you want to submit that for consideration for funding in the state transportation improvement program. Again, that same, that same language is on this slide. Next slide. Okay, Ruben's up. Thank you, and we'll have some time for questions afterwards. There's the.
Okay. I'll work on using this, okay.
Raise that up a little bit. There you go.
Hear me?
Yes.
Slide, we're looking at how a CTP fits into the. And the CTP, long range. Next, we have the project and funding. Scored. And design, where it minimizes the impacts and that's where the design takes place. And then we go through construction where it's building the project. And then last but not least, it's the maintenance and operations where we make the infrastructure last longer and perform better. And with the. Um, they are high-level plans and this is not the final design. Um, we go through more detailed environmental review and design after the CTP, CTP, before final dis. CTP recommendations, it's a needs, needs-based plan and they identify the transportation needs, um, provide, we try to provide reasonable proposals and they're based on data-driven analysis and public input. Next slide. Okay, so, uh, the CTP projects, um, proposed proposals, um, uses data from other plans like the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Program, which is where they're funded, um, and construction, um, is in that document and right away. Local and land use development plans or land use plans or even strategic plans, which is what I think they have, um, with Sparta. They have, uh, the statewide transportation plans, which are local and then the local or statewide for bicycle, pedestrian and transit plans. Next slide. Okay, um, this is actually a vicinity map. And so, um, basically, um, CTPs typically take between eighteen and twenty-four months. And the typical process is we develop a local vision, as David mentioned, um, about the, um, the vision statement and the goals and objectives. Then we go through the system assessment. Then we analyze the alternatives and we develop a draft plan and then we go through the adoption process. And generally, CTPs are either a county CTP, an MPO, which is a Metropolitan Planning Organization CTP, or a regional leveled CTP, which is, um, and rural or RPO. Uh, next slide. Now, these are the products, the next three slides of the CTP. Um, this first diagram is the cover sheet of the CTP. And then the, um, this to the right of us, um, it's user-friendly, um, for the public and it covers a lot of things, um, in the report. Purpose and overview, the vision and so forth. Next slide. Um, and then we have the four CTP maps. These are the recommendation maps. The purple one is, uh, facility types. That, um, burgundy one is the recommendations, the highway recommendations. And then the green is the public transportation and rail. And then that blue is the bicycle and pedestrian maps. And then the recommendations list has the actual projects that are in these maps. And it has the actual, uh, name of the facility and, uh, the, uh, termini and a little information about that particular project. Uh, next slide. These are support maps here, um, that's a part of the CTP product, products. And we do the analysis and informational, uh, to support the, um, recommendations that are in the CTP. You have, um, analysis maps, which are the bicycle, pedestrian, um, rail and transit. And then, uh, there's also, um, bridge deficiencies and also, um, crash frequency. And this one on the front is a V over C, which is volume over, um, capacity, which helps us to determine where congestion and other issues that are going on in the transportation system. And then this last sheet is the project sheets. And in the project sheets, um, that's the detailed information for each project. And it has the termini, the actual facility, um, descriptions, um, volumes, um, title six, um, environmental features and a lot of other things in that particular sheet. So there's a lot of information, from information in the project sheets. And the next slide is actually, I think, the video, if it's working. Yep. And if that can be clicked on. It looks like it's trying to work.
This weird new tool is quickly becoming the most popular Christmas gift of 2023. It replaces up to ninety percent of tools.
Hi, today we wanted to tell you about some important changes we have made to improve how we plan for transportation in North Carolina. Known as the CTPs, the comprehensive transportation plans are developed through a process that involves every city and county working together with the state to develop a long-range plan for transportation projects. Our key partners in this process include the metropolitan and rural planning organizations. By watching this short video, you will learn what's new in the CTP.
A comprehensive transportation plan is a vision for thirty years out. It covers every mode of travel and your plan could help your community secure funding from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for future projects. Technology is changing our world and we are improving our planning process in response to feedback from our local partners. Streamlining our planning document that once was more than one hundred pages to about thirty pages. And we're putting all the supporting documentation online. In addition, we are changing some of our maps to make them easier to read. For example, we want the highway map for your plan to show more useful information. So we're breaking it into two maps. The first one, called the highway recommendations map, shows funded projects and future year proposals.
As well as how each proposal addresses one of the four following needs.
Congestion and mobility, access management and operations, modernization, or other issues such as improving safety or promoting economic development. The second highway map highlights the facility classification and control of access for each road improvement.
Here we've added a sixth class called multi-lane major for a minimum four-lane undivided road. And the boulevard class is changed too, to include at least four lanes.
Together, these two redesigned maps will show future recommendations, highway purpose, type of access, and even whether or not the road should have a median. This information will help you make better planning decisions. Maps used for some of the other travel modes are being tweaked also. We're combining the bicycling and pedestrian maps into one with a simplified legend showing that a route is a bicycle or pedestrian or for both modes of travel. For public transportation and rail, we are shifting the bus routes into three categories, urban, regional and rural. And for rail and freight transportation, there will be more opportunities to discuss rail safety, new development sites and future rail corridors in your area.
You will use a new analysis process that improves your multimodal recommendations in maps. We are calling these overall changes the CTP two-point-oh. It's now easier to prepare a new and more user-friendly plan.
You'll find that by working together in your regions, these plans better show your community's long-range vision for transportation. If you have any questions, call our transportation planning division at nine-one-nine-seven-zero-seven-zero-nine-zero-zero. Thanks for watching and we look forward to your continued collaboration as we plan for transportation needs across our state.
Okay. And I think the last slide, um, is, um, our contact information. Okay. And, uh, Gerald is the actual project. Doing all the details and.
Looking for his work.
Okay, well, thank you and if there are any questions?
I've got several questions, I always do, but first, John, do you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, right now, whenever we reviewed, uh, projects that are not funded for Allegheny County, we only had two, if I remember right. And that is putting a roundabout in on the bypass in eighteen and a roundabout at Grandview Road and, and, uh, the bypass. Now, with, this is our opportunity where we can put in a request so that Bobby can do sixty-five on two-twenty-one. Possibly widen ninety-three and do a few of the other projects and, and road improvements, uh, that we need in the county. It's going, it's going to require that citizens of Allegheny County come to us and let us know where the needs are, to be quite frank with you. It's going to be hard. North Wilkesboro's got the, got the bull by the horns right now with the race down in North Wilkesboro. They're taking priority, they're adding two thousand feet to the runway down at, uh, at their airstrip. But, uh, if, if we do not put a request in, I guarantee you, we won't get anything. So it's going to have to be thought out, work with these gentlemen and hopefully in the future, we can get something. Thank you.
I would like to see us get some more guardrails around the county too. I feel like that's a major safety issue.
Timmy?
Well, I just think we'll wait on their, their findings and see what they come up with and I'm sure it'll be much better than what we have now.
Say, I've always got questions. Um, I think John alluded to this, I don't know, it was about a year ago that we've been doing fifty-five miles an hour forever. And somebody in Raleigh or someplace decided that we had to do forty-five miles an hour. I disagree with that judgment on their part, totally. And that was for months and months, that was a big concern to the people in the county. We're a rural community. Most people started driving a tractor when they were six or seven. They've been driving pickups since they were nine or ten. And now's an engineer or whoever decides that it's not safe to drive fifty-five miles an hour like we have been. And, and I'm not picking on you, I'm just telling you.
Where, where is that exactly? So I, so I'm aware.
Just let me tell you how this happened. I came to town one morning at nine o'clock, I went back at twelve. Nine o'clock, it was fifty-five miles an hour. At twelve, it was forty-five. That's on two-twenty-one, uh, parts of ninety-three. Took away all of our passing zones. We do have some people that drive twenty-five or thirty miles an hour. You need a passing zone to be able to get around these people. Everybody knows who they are.
We've seen some on our way here.
Well.
Have you noticed we only have three stoplights in the whole county too?
And they're right here.
Three.
And they're right here.
And they're right here in this town.
And we'd invited some people from the, uh, from, I guess, we're from DOT, out of Hickory or someplace. And, you know, their standard answer is, I mean, this is, I guess, y'all have it printed someplace, we do what's safe for the people.
Number one.
That, I mean, that's a catch-all answer. But to us, it's really made a difference. I'm not going to say anything about our highway patrol, but fortunately, I've never seen anybody pulled over in those zones. And I think the highway patrol for that, that, that's a different story, but I think that needs to be relooked at. I know that sometimes these decisions can be changed. That's just one. The other is, Michelle was talking about, we're a rural community and we got snake roads and we need guardrails, especially in the wintertime with these school buses going down the north side of a hill and you've got drop-offs that are a hundred feet. The only thing to stop a school bus would be a tree. So, I know, I go to Virginia a lot and these rural roads, they've got guardrails. I think that would be something nice for y'all to look at. I live on a secondary road, gravel road. And our DOT up here is great. I couldn't ask for a better set of gentlemen that get out there and work. They just don't have enough gravel to keep putting on these roads. And I don't know if you can, if this is the place to ask, please, give them a few more loads of gravel. You know, gravel doesn't last long, you run over it, run over it and it's dust after a while. But I'll say this, I don't want my road changed, I want it to stay gravel because it's nice and slow. But I thank you all for coming, I thank you for listening and I would like to see if Michael's got any comments and.
Oh, I was just mentioning the fact that I appreciate you alerting the state police that they haven't been on those roads that much. But, um, no, I've worked with these guys, we, we've had sit-down meetings, they've been very good to work with so far. They know that we are in the process of updating our land use, which was, my understanding is one of the first steps. We hope to have that completed by the end of the year. So, once that happens, we'll start evolving into the next steps. So, I'm very appreciative of each and every one of them, look forward to working with them.
I thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Anything else, John, Michelle?
No, we'll discuss, discuss the next meeting, I'm sure.
All right.
We'll send you for a ride with Bobby one day on the, on the crooked roads going sixty-five. You can, I didn't find the guardrail needs.
I'd be happy to take you all on a tour of the county anytime you wanted to. I drive slow. I drive slow.
I will refer you to my wife. When she gets in the vehicle with me, she grabs a panic bar and locks herself in, and her eyes are closed. And if I'm lying, dear, please tell her. I run 70 and 75 in 221 all the time.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I retract that from all State Highway Patrol communications.
Take it for Christmas.
How was your first meeting?
It was great. I enjoyed it. Looking forward to working with y'all.
Okay.
Want to speak?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You've got nothing to say?
See you in January.
How you doing? My name is James Upchurch. I'm with the Transportation Planning Division, NC DOT. I'm a supervisor-manager of one of four in the state. My area, they call it the Mountains Region. It's a 25-county region, so Allegheny's one of those counties. So I had a chance to meet with Michael, and I've worked with David with the High Country. Very excellent folks to work with, and they really have a lot of the local needs in mind when we work with them. And so they're very key partners. So you'll be working with Ruben Crumby and of course Gerald Carter back there. But the main thing I want to say, I just wanted to just listen in and listen to what you all had to say, questions you had tonight, and just, you know, we're very honored to have a partnership with y'all. So on behalf of our Transportation Planning Division and Secretary of DOT, Joey Hopkins, we appreciate working with you. We'll get it kicked off.
Now, you gentlemen are welcome to stay. I know you've got a trip to make.
Long ways to boon. Just note those 45 mile an hour zones.
Now, we move on to general business for information. Fairgrounds concession stand lease, Mr. Carter?
Just for information tonight, Mr. Chairman, but the board is familiar with our annual attempt of seeking someone to operate the concession stand at the fairgrounds. That is coming up here at the end of the year. So at your mid-month meeting, we will have the RFP to go out for that, for the board to consider placing out once again. Get everything in line so that it's not a hurry-up-and-get-it-done sequence as it was last year. So we're getting this out well in advance this year, but just for informational purposes at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Not, we'll move to item two, TDA chair appointment. Mr. Carter, that's you again?
It is. And this again is information, at a previous meeting, there was an appointment of a couple of members to the TDA. I do not recollect there being a chairman designated for the upcoming year at this point. So I think that also at your mid-month December meeting, you should probably consider appointing such, because that is a function of this governing body.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, item three, ordinance committee update request. John Irwin?
Look at all the ordinances. We've got a number of ordinances that frankly, we need to reconsider possibly removing them. I came in and I asked one question. Michael, how many licenses has he been asked to provide for an ordinance to license insulation contractors and others who install materials and equipment designed to meet the energy conservancy standards in North Carolina? How many times have you checked for your county license from your insulation installers? Operating without a license is a $50 fine. And guess who gives them the license? County commissioners. That ordinance was passed and modified in 1978.
But never repealed?
And never repealed. No. As a matter of fact, we've got another ordinance, our waste ordinance. We have satellite dumpsters in the county. I think we need to go back and review and take a few of these things out or possibly modify them. We know that the animal control ordinance is up to date because we've just finished with it. Did you know that you cannot put in an alarm system in Allegheny County without a license that's issued by the county manager?
Are charged for these licenses?
Yep, $15. Allegheny Emergency Services Board or its designated representative on form supplied by the board, together with an application fee of $15. And putting in an alarm system that isn't approved is a $50 fine. Of course, with all the ordinances, the maximum we can hit them for is $50. But granted, it's a small thing, but these things are out there, and it gives the public the opportunity to question, why do we pass ordinances if we're not going to enforce them? So I think we need to do a quick review on that. It's evident that there needs to be modifications, if not repeals. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Lord's pleasure. Michael, do you have any comment? Heather?
I can certainly say that I haven't issued any of those permits, so...
I would like to have a work session on this, because, you know, Greg and I are on this committee, but I would like to go over all of these, because, you know, five heads are better than two. So somebody might come up with something that they think about that Greg and I may not even consider. So how about we do a work session and discuss it?
That was going to be my recommendation, so that you could take a look at all of them and see what they say, because I know I should be fined because I put in a security system for myself, and I didn't get a permit. I didn't ask.
And it is renewable yearly.
Oh, wow.
And if you have a false alarm, you can be charged $25 for every false alarm.
Well, mine isn't hooked up to any agency, so, you know, it'll just let me know on the phone, somebody's trying to come in to my office, so...
With the changes in these telephonic, you can order and put in your own, it's just something that technology has bypassed. And if I remember correctly, that ordinance was passed in 1971.
I was one-year-old.
In 1978, the only inspections you had was insulation.
Exactly.
Yeah. There was no, in Allegheny County, they didn't start until 1980 or 1981 for building inspection. And that's the reason the county, I guess, was issuing, I don't know...
Michael?
I was just going to, Commissioner Lufman, I mean, if you wanted to have a work session at your January 2nd meeting, you could have it at, you know, 4:00 or 5:00, whichever one you want to do. That'd be your next opportunity.
Like a winner. Can you pull up all these ordinances that we need to review, or how many are there? One, two?
I would defer to Commissioner John Irwin. He seems to have them.
There are about 20, but really, whenever you get right down to it, there's six or seven that need to be looked at. A lot of them are modifications to an ordinance, like air sales, things of that nature. Certainly, just a quick glance, the ordinance for regulation and control of telephonic alarm systems, I think that's self-evident. You can go through real quick.
All of the ordinances are on the county website, if you wanted to take a look at them.
Our January meeting will be on the 2nd.
Yes, sir. The 1st is the first Monday, but that is a holiday, so it will be the 2nd.
Is that enough time to get everything together, to have a work session then, in January?
It's a matter of just printing off the ordinances or sending the ordinances accordingly. I think so.
Most of them are one to two pages, three pages, and a long one is a four, so I don't think...
I think it would be helpful, once you pull them, if Danielle could put a copy in our box that we have a chance to read them before we get there that night, or...
Well, if we can go on the county website, then they're all there.
They're on the county website.
Can we add the rules of procedure during that work session? Might be a good idea.
Two items, I'm sure.
That'd be the first meeting, be January the 2nd.
Yes, sir.
About that April? Thank you. Anything else on that? If not, we'll move to section D, and TDA took over number one position at that point. Michael?
Motion to authorize Parks and Recreation to make application to the TDA for a HVAC system for the black building.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. John and Timmy, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 5-0, 4-0. Page 24 is our holiday schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the... Well, okay. On these dates that fall on a Monday that are holiday, shouldn't that be represented on our schedule?
What do you mean?
See, they have January, the observation date, January the 1st, day of the week, Monday. We're not, normally, if we're talking about our meetings...
Your next one's...
That's what this applies to.
Okay. I got you. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 4-0. Meeting schedule, I got it. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, April. Ready. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 4-0. Item number four, sports complex RFQ. Mr. Carter?
Earlier this evening, we had a work session that discussed the possibility of adding a sports complex in addition to the swimming pool that we have talked about now for some time. We had a nice presentation. We had good discussion. I think we all learned some things. In my opinion, if we are contemplating this type of project, then we need to go ahead and put out an RFQ for engineers and architect firms to provide us with their qualifications for such a sports complex. And what I am asking tonight is for the board to authorize me to put that RFQ out. We'll run it for probably around three weeks. We'll receive those proposals back in. We'll, I'm guessing that the Recreation Committee will meet to review those submittals, and we will have a score sheet that we will rank those proposals accordingly and go through the proper process of making a recommendation to the full board to empower one of those firms to provide the necessary study estimates and associated materials in order for us to have a more detailed and accurate reflection of what this complex would cost in a very time of the essence manner. So I am asking for consideration to put that RFQ out and begin that process.
I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Carter to put out the RFQ for the sports complex.
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Moving to section E, county managers' comments.
Just a couple. I want to first of all congratulate Commissioner Bobby Irwin and Commissioner Michelle Lufman for your election of Chair and Vice Chair again for the year. Appreciate that leadership. I want to continue to recognize our staff. I think we have some very talented individuals, and, you know, we have some that are taking on additional roles. We have some that don't think a thing about having extra duties tossed their ways. And as a whole, I think we have a very good group of individuals right now. And in particular, I notice, sometimes I recognize people, but I know Commissioner Lufman, you've talked about the transition at DSS, and, you know, I think that Stacy is doing a really good job at that right now. She's got a lot of challenges ahead of her, but she's the right person for that. So, want to point that out. I also want to remind the board that at your mid-month meeting, you will have your department heads at that podium giving you your year-end reviews of what they have done within their respective departments each year. So that will be coming up. We also continue to have a number of employees that are going through health-related issues. As you probably heard, there's a lot of flu running around right now, and, you know, those of us that are still upright, we're dodging those that aren't. So we're, please keep everyone in mind over that. One note, when we were talking about the committees earlier, I believe we have on the sheet that had every committee there, it's called the Court Security and Renovation Committee. But I believe we changed that to a Building and Facility, or Building, Grounds and Facilities Committee, and that is what Commissioner Bobby and Commissioner Timmy serve on. So I just want to point out that in addition to making those changes for the member appointed, we also need to make that change to that committee, because it is no longer the Court Security and Renovations Committee. And by identifying that, I would like to have that committee meet sometime over the next couple of weeks, so that we can further discuss what ultimately will be a recommendation to the board for our transfer facility as we move forward. I know that we've all talked about it. We went over and looked at it, but again, we've got to get some of these things going. So if you two will look at your schedules and just let me know what works, we'll line that up. And thanks to April for filling in tonight. Danielle is one of those individuals that's not so healthy today. So, April, thank you for that, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. We'll start, Commissioner comments, John?
I'd like to remind everyone that today was the first day to file for the offices that are coming up for election in 2024. Would recommend that you look at the responsibilities of each office. If you think you are going to... If you think you are going to come in and you are going to make major changes, you may be surprised. I know I let my bulldog mouth overload my puppy dog Fanny. Whenever you come in, there's very few things that the county commissioners can do. I would guesstimate that 90 to 95% of the budget, we have very little, if any, control over, very little control on that. North Carolina legislature, if they allow the county to have the control, they are giving up their control over that particular subject or area, and they are greedy. So, if you are one of those that like to stand on the sideline and tell us what we should be doing, here's your opportunity to show us. And I recommend that you do. It is an education. It is a education in spades, especially whenever you started getting in these committees and you started looking at how government operates and the things you can and cannot do. And I can save you some money. If you file, they will tell you all about your family and its background. So, don't give any money to ancestry.com, just file. That's a side benefit. Other than that, I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Please be safe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Michelle?
I would like to also give a shout-out to our local fire and emergency people. I'm the Fire Commissioner, and I'm always impressed with the dedication of our volunteers. You know, I get a lot of calls about changing things in fire departments and things like that. You've got to realize that a lot of fire departments, well, all the fire departments are governed by, by their own board. And, you know, we, we basically only oversee the tax dollars that are spent on that fire and rescue department. So, just please keep that in mind and be thankful for the people that get out of bed at 4:00 a.m. and go work the wrecks and go work the fires and traffic control and different things, because they do a lot. And, you know, a lot of it's very unsung, so... The other shout-out I want to give is to our Sheriff's Department. They did the run for a clause this year, and I've been seeing on social media where they've been handing out toys to the, to the children of the schools, to make sure that every child gets a toy. And, you know, thanks to the people who give to that, and also thanks to our Sheriff's Department for heading that up to make sure that, that all the children get something this year that, you know, we take for granted, that sometimes they, they may not get anything. So, thanks to our sheriff for doing that. That's all.
Thank you, Michelle. Timmy?
Not a lot. I think, the first thing, I think the most important thing is just to thank everybody for their input, for through their work, work session, their expertise. Great meeting, very productive, and I really appreciate everybody's time and effort that they put in that. That's it.
Thank you. Just a few things. I'd like to thank the board for their confidence in me and Michelle, the big Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you all for that. Last meeting, I was going to say something about the transfer station, how clean it looked, but I, I forgot to. But here in the last few months, that place has really impressed me, how well organized, there's very little trash, even on these windy days, there's very little, or if there is, they're out picking it up. I think they, all those guys have done a great job over there. Other than that, Bob, if you would introduce your, your assistant and tell us a little bit about her. Come up to the microphone. Bring her up here. Pull that thing down a little bit.
This is Mackenzie Hudson, and she's expressed some interest in writing and, and learning about our trade, and I'm hoping to expose her to those things. And this is her first county, this is her second county commissioners' meeting. Her, she, at some, go ahead and tell when your first was.
I was looking over where the location was of this place. I remembered my Girl Scout troop did the Pledge of Allegiance here one year when I was really, really tiny. So, this is the first time I've been here, and this is the second time that I've been here for one of these meetings. And it's good to be here. I've enjoyed it.
Thank you. I hope we see more of you.
Don't take up any of Bob's bad habits.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Heather, you got some words for us?
Not tonight.
Mr. Carter?
Hello, sir.
Boy. April?
We've talked everybody out of here with all that.
They've all left. With no other comments, I'll call this meeting to a close. Thank you all.